Welcome everyone to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors and Environmental Advisory Council Joint Meeting. We call the meeting to order. We can start with introductions of the EAC members. I don't know how you want to start, Mr. Schaefer?
We'll start at that end. Rich, why don't you go ahead and start? Just a little background too, just so they understand more than just.
This is the setup we need because Zoom unfortunately yet.
Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Richard Valago. I've been a resident of Lower Gwinnett Township for more than forty years. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And my background's environmental engineering.
My name's Maureen Nun. I'm the liaison between the EAC and the Planning Commission. I have over forty years experience in product development in the chemical area, so I act to advise people on chemical issues on the EAC.
Mary Ann Gray had been a resident of Lower Gwinnett since two thousand and two. I just have a lifelong interest in sustainable practices.
I'm Mark Schaefer. I'm Chairman of the EAC. I am currently a Research Professor at Drexel University in Biomedical Engineering. My background is a doctorate in biomedical engineering and developing medical products. And I'm also a board member of Whiswick and Trails where I chair the Water Resources Committee.
Ree Monahan, I'm a resident of, I've been a resident of Lower Gwinnett Township for twenty-seven years. I served as EAC Chair when we were the Gwinnett Green Committee and then for several years as an EAC. I've always been interested in environmental issues. My professional background is environmental planning, stormwater management, water quality, and landscape design. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Brown. I've lived in Lower Gwinnett since nineteen ninety-four. I started serving on the Gwinnett Green Committee in two thousand and twelve and then when it segued into the EAC, I continued there. I too have a lifelong interest in environmental issues. I wrote my first report on pollution when I was fourteen, which is a really long time ago. And my professional background is in financial management.
I'm Brenda Dahl and I've been a resident nineteen years. Got involved back when Ed Brant started the Recycling Committee. I don't know when that was, but it was a long time ago. Became Gwinnett Green and yeah, I just have a passion for sustainability and green practices.
Thank you all. So next we'll segue into some of the functions of the Environmental Advisory Council and I'll start off with reading your mission statement, which is to educate, facilitate, and promote sustainable practices within Lower Gwinnett Township and the greater community through educational workshops and programs, articles, and community events. I'm going to turn it over to you. Anyone who wants to talk about what they believe the function of the EAC is?
Well, I think that summarizes it quite well. I've got our enabling ordinance. So we are an advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors and we respect that that relationship and that role. To our job is to identify problems, environmental problems, recommend plans and programs to rectify those, make recommendations on use of open space, promote community environmental programs, and keep an index of open spaces and give advice as requested by the Board of Supervisors on matters dealing with protection, conservation, management, promotion, acquisition, and use of natural resources, air, land, water, and open space within the township. So just for those online and people here, that's what our charge is and we've been trying to act on that. Other comments from members beyond that?
I guess just that we have several categories like such as land stewardship, water stewardship, resource conservation, and communication outreach and education. And under each of those umbrellas, we have several separate subcommittees. So we have groups working on individual programs.
We thank you and appreciate all your work. In that same vein, we want to highlight some of the accomplishments of the two thousand and twenty-three year. I want to ensure that everyone is aware that you were successful in completing bird walks, storm drain markings, public educational activities such as the movie nights and cleanup events. You tabled at the Fall Fest and our Ambler Earth Day, distributed three hundred trees at the annual tree giveaway, recycled one thousand one hundred and seventy pounds of batteries, five hundred and seventy pounds of techno trash and electronics, and two hundred and thirty-four pounds of holiday lights. As well as you recognize residents and businesses that exemplified environmental stewardship with the Growing Green Awards. So we are greatly appreciative of all of those accomplishments and you should be very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess next we're going to talk about what our two thousand and twenty-four long-range plans are. And I can tell that this plan is comprehensive and truly long-range. And I'm going to start, I think, with some of the themes and priorities that the EAC has identified that they wanted to focus on in two thousand and twenty-four. Again, this is a very expansive.
We've got a slip of the tongue, Freudian slip.
Freudian slips, excuse me. The first being that you want to continue the good work and programs that have been serving the residents. Focus efforts on education for homeowners and businesses as a priority. Working with other township entities and outside organizations to conduct volunteer operations where possible to maximize the impact and build a stronger local environmental network. In addition, you want to work with the township's existing plans to promote environmental practices and education. Is all that accurate? Reflection of the long-range plans?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess we want to talk about, I think we should start with land stewardship. And I don't know if you guys want to start the conversation. Within the land stewardship, the goal overall is to promote diverse habitat and healthy tree soil and woodlands. So what you would want to do as far as continuing or recurring would be to continue the native tree giveaway and timeframe would be October. Public education and demonstrations through EAC workshops, newsletter articles, speaker speakers giveaways, and just to continue to educate our residents about establishing and maintaining healthy habitat. That accurate as well?
Yes, it is. So again, going back to last year, of course, we had programs here on composting your backyard birds, things like that is direct connections to the community. And of course, the native trees are one of our most popular activities that is growing.
I think.
But the movie nights too were like.
The movie nights were, yes, and regenerative farming and things like that are quite informative as well.
Next is to support the.
I'm sorry, the plan is to continue those.
Yes, yes. Okay. We're lining up speakers and arranging for the movies and I think we've got next one coming in is.
Well, the speaker Wednesday. Sorry.
Right. Our first speaker is Mike Schneller, who's going to be talking about tips and tricks and tools for homeowners to try to conserve energy and talking about the PICO Energy Assessments and giving people the opportunity to get free or reduced cost assessments. If they are here, they can register for that. So that's this Wednesday at seven and I hope we get a lot of people there because it's a good reason to come out.
We have it on site.
Next Wednesday?
Yes, next Wednesday. Yes, we just got the posters put together.
Okay.
And they're going out.
Since we're live and this is going to be recorded, do you want to say the time next Wednesday?
Seven PM in this building, yes. And there will be a giveaway.
Yes, we're hoping to, a couple of free attic stairs covers for people that have attic stairs, you know, cover the pull-down ones. It helps to insulate. Just another incentive for people to come out. And I should also say that we're working in April toward having a presentation concerning what residents can get from the IRA and the IJRA and the, you know, the energy conservation and clean energy promoting acts that were passed in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. So we'll have that. And then working on somebody to come out and speak about solar options for people. And then a movie night somewhere in the fall or summer or something like that.
The PICO speakers on our website and social media. I did see that. It's on the front page of the EAC, like the, I just wanted to make sure we said it.
Can I just point out something? So first of all, thank you to the team of the EAC that put this document together. I think it's really useful for the board to see everything written down and to be able to discuss it for this coming year and the years ahead of us. And just to sort of clarify a little bit, the EAC is asking for the boards concurrence on the items that they've listed as continuing and recurring. So these are things that the EAC needs to know that there are resources for and the board and the staff can support going forward. And that's as opposed to the long-range plans, which are items that the EAC has discussed as being important to our community. And currently there's no resources assigned for these items, but the reason for meeting tonight is to decide if this is, these are items that the board and the staff can support going forward. And if so, then resources could be assigned and, you know, priorities and just the EAC can gauge our interests. So then if they had follow-up steps they can take, then they can take this back to their committee and see how they can contribute going forward. So there, there's a difference in intent in these, in these items under continuing versus new and long-range. So I think we need to think about how many of the new long-range items are of interest to the board and that we are willing to support as a community.
Thank you very much for framing it that way. Because that, that truly is the, the goal of this meeting and I'm remiss in not kind of pointing that out. We were charged in a meeting with our liaisons, Mike and Tessie, that, you know, what do you want to do long-term? Don't, you know, something's going to take time, something's going to take more money, but we have to discuss them. And that's, that's how we tried to organize this and lay it out. And truly, we presume that we'd get easy concurrence on things we're already doing, which you've already said we're doing very well and we'll keep doing very well. But then we want to discuss what other things we should start looking at strategically. Thank you for framing it that way. Appreciate that.
So under land stewardship, are you looking for us to go point by point to sort of discuss?
Well, we have suggestions. I just wanted to get through the first three bullets, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
No, no, the last bullet is around Arbor Day and trees and Tree City and Earth Day objectives. We have some suggestions that are related to those. I mean, I think all of those three bullets are, you know, I think we can take a vote and we can confirm the continuance and, and support of those. But there's also suggestions, I think, that at least I have, and I think some of the other board members and staff have provided the board as it relates to ways to improve and to consider when moving forward.
Sure, however you want to structure it, you want to, if you need to vote or prefer to vote to get that confirmation, that works for us and then we can just discuss the long range as, as it works out.
Well, before we go into long range, some of the guidance, I think that the staff has kind of given us as feedback and with staff input and as it relates to demonstration projects, we wanted to ensure that the EAC is partnering with Park and Rec to do some of these demonstration projects and locations identified in the Parkmaster Plan rather than new locations. If that could be agreeable.
Absolutely. Yeah, since we have a Park and Rec liaison, we, we are pretty closely aligned and we know it's not within our purview to go do something in a park. It's their purview to add our suggestion or recommendation. So we're, we're cool with that, as we say.
Next would be to kind of focus a portion of your educational campaign on landscaping that would deter deer and the associated maintenance required for long-term results.
Got a question or?
It's a question. It's a suggestion. We're looking for feedback and, you know, dialogue as it relates to, is that something that you believe that you could incorporate within the current or continuing activities?
Yeah, it's a later point. We certainly, we certainly recognize the, the negative consequences of deer that are uncontrolled within the natural environment. They are, I call them wood rats, but we have too many deer per acre, far beyond what the natural habitat can support properly, to the detriment of both other mammals and birds and of course, everyone's shrubbery. So we would concur with that in terms of a, something to look at and provide advice on.
And then work with public works, Park and Rec, and other organizations to develop volunteer activities that would maintain the township's existing gardens at the township building, penland woods, and provide firsthand experience by how gardens function.
Yeah, we've been.
I think you've been doing that to a degree.
We've been doing that to a degree, but then working with Sandy about activities within Park and Rec and harnessing the power of volunteers. There are only seven of us. There's only so many things we can do and we recognize we need to engage the volunteer capabilities of our community. And then again, working with Sandy and the Park and Rec, that, that makes perfect sense to us. We'd love to do that. And we're kind of, I'd have to say, learning our way in terms of engaging a volunteer group. So that's, that's kind of a to-do for us.
I think one of the objectives of outreach going forward was to try to engage more residents as volunteers so that the few full-time members of the EAC don't have to take on this burden by themselves. So there are other groups in the township that are interested in that native plants, pollinator pathways, gardening. A couple of us, a few of us belong to a garden club that's very interested in native plants. So I think we can line up help to take care of those gardens. But we just need to outline a strategy, working with the staff as to how that can be done. I know that the township contracts with a company to mow. And so some of the plants in the rain garden have been mowed down. And so we just need to come up with a plan to make sure that the lawn mowing is compatible with the gardening and the, you know, the demonstration gardens and, you know, signage would be nice. But we just need a, I think the EAC and the board need a strategy for how to take care of these gardens going forward.
We'd agree and my, my only points there is one, none of us are full-time EAC. We all have other things to do. So that when you said full-time EAC was a little scary thought. And then we are.
As opposed to associate members.
Oh, okay. I just, the time commitment is enough as it is. The other point is through, in fact, the outreach of the native plant giveaway, we get a lot of emails, lists, we get a list of emails, which if we're permitted to, we can then use those for volunteer opportunities. People come to us at the plant and say, hey, this is great stuff. How can I help? So we're trying to use that to develop a cadre of volunteers as well, within the limits of data privacy, of course.
Did you guys, I'm sorry to interrupt, but did you guys ask on the, the form submission when folks sign up for the trees? Did you ask whether they'd be interested in volunteering for certain projects?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get decent feedback from that or?
Yes. I mean, I don't think we signed for certain projects, but we have a list of people say, yeah, we'd like to help out. And in fact, you know, our meetings, people were showing up to our meetings for a couple of meetings afterwards. Just say, hey, I, you know, I got a tree and just, I just want to sit in and see what you do. So.
That's good.
Visitors, visitors to our meetings, yes.
There's another aspect, Janine, to the whole volunteer recruitment. Sandy, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot, is developing a handbook for us for volunteers. And we sort of have held off in going actively recruiting until the handbook is complete so we can share that. And so I have great confidence in Sandy that that'll be done soon. But yeah, the feedback from the tree giveaway was, was good.
And of course, there are limits. I mean, to be fair, one should always mention your failures along with your successes. You know, we tried to have volunteers clean up the exit off of three oh nine and try to, we had a whole program to do that with recording, recruiting corporate volunteers and we were, we couldn't do that for insurance reasons. So we tried, not every time, you know, but you swing and sometimes you miss. But so we're also aware acutely of the limits of certain volunteer activities. So we're learning as we go.
Well, of note, that first cleanup was highly successful. So that wasn't the reason it was discontinued.
No, I, I understand. Discontinued it was. Anyway.
The next thing is just going to be to continue the popular annual tree giveaway.
Yeah. I think we put that in our budget request for next year and expanding it to not just trees, but also shrubs or other types of trees to, other types of native plants to kind of expand the offerings. And that's been tremendously popular. We usually have a waiting list, right? So we sell out and then those people that are on the waiting list then become the first customers the following year. So we try and keep everybody happy.
So those, those four things kind of talk about all of the, the long-range ideas, continuing and recurring, in addition about land stewardship. Every, it seemed like you were in agreeance with all of those four suggestions?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Somebody have something to say? I didn't know. Somebody say something? No?
I was a little confused about your four points. Are you talking about things under the continuing recurring or you're talking about long-range stuff?
It's addressing, it's addressing both.
Both.
Yeah. Those are suggestions from the board as it relates to the EAC. I just wanted to know if they, they were something that you guys felt comfortable with inclusion. So as we talked about deer, I know that your point was a little bit addressing the issue of deer damage. Like I'm just using this as an example. We're saying the focus could be to use a portion of the education campaign on landscaping that will deter deer and then the associated maintenance required with the long-term results. So this is discussing the addressing the, the issues of deer damage in the township. This is that point as, as far as addressing it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
So it's, so the suggestion then is to not develop a comprehensive plan for the deer, but rather just to educate the public about deer-resistant plants?
No, I said to focus a portion of the educational campaign on the landscaping that would deter deer and then the associated maintenance required with it for long-term result.
Then if there's any other further deer management, I think that's another part or another part of the document. So we're just saying pull that part into the education program.
Yeah, I think that's really important. Thanks for bringing that up because people who are longtime gardeners appreciate how, which plants can be resistant.
I think it's also true that if at some point the township moves to a more aggressive deer management program, which I'm not saying we're doing, but if that were to come to pass, it, the education program behind it would be very important. So, and starting that now makes sense to me.
So does everyone feel comfortable with, with us voting on like any additional questions, comments from the board supervisors or the EAC around addressing and accepting that those points that we just discussed be goals that the EAC will work towards for two thousand and twenty-four?
I don't think we have any objection. I think we just have to think about that last one, it would have to be in the fall. Just the time it takes us to put together an educational program. We already have some in line, but the deer one, we just have to pull that together. So we'll get it done in two thousand and twenty-four. It just may not be this spring. That's all.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? Me? You're good?
I'm good.
Any additional questions or comments from the public?
We do have.
If you just, somebody could pass, Linda.
Yes.
You just have to say your name and.
Melinda Wolf, nine thirty Ridgeview Lane. With regards to the deer issue, I highlighted that as one that I think that you guys should undertake. However, the past couple of years, every landscaper that I've employed or engaged says, when the deer are hungry, they'll eat anything. So deer resistance really does not mean much anymore. And I think that's why it's getting to be deer management in the near future, especially with all the new construction, the deer end up in our, yeah, we have a whole family. They're, they're right up on the deck, you know, like, I can't do anything about it, but basically they'll eat anything.
It's maintenance.
So it's management.
Yeah. Management maintenance.
I, I think also if township is considering planting new trees or developers are considering planting new trees, it's an issue for the growth and health of those things over time. You know, we're not going to be, the EAC is not going to be supervising, I don't know, the industrial parks or whatever with, with their landscaping, whatever. You know, we can, we can educate what we can, but as we look toward the future, it is hard to imagine doing a planting program or open space replenishment program, which are things that we would be interested in having the township think about without having some framework for dealing with the deer, which are likely to affect all that stuff.
Excuse me, Maureen Nun. Basically, one of the things I wanted to point out, in addition to landscape damage, which everybody is aware of as a problem with the deer, it's a traffic issue. And people, I think there were two people killed within Montgomery County in an accident involving deer. So it's, it's beyond just property. It also gets into the safety issues.
Thank you.
So what are we voting on? The first three bullet points under land?
I mean, is there a need to vote on just directions to the EAC? I mean, like, we're, I didn't.
No, I didn't. I didn't make a motion. There's no vote.
And I thought we were just sort of getting together to sort of come up with jointly.
But I think that it's helpful for us to give concrete suggestions and encouragement.
Yeah, I think we have. But if you feel, I mean, if Chair feels there's a need to take a vote, we'll make a motion or vote. I'm just not, I didn't understand it to be that.
Doesn't have to be. I mean, we're taking notes and we'll, I'm sure there'll be minutes afterwards that will also, yeah.
There will be.
I, I can't write and run the mic at the same time, so I appreciate the backup.
So still over on, I guess land stewardship, just talking about working around you, the utility of electric vehicles and equipment and when it's time for replacements. Am I going too fast? I'm a bit too far.
Wait, we're still under land.
This is under land stewardship, yeah.
Yeah, new long range.
Yes. Am I going too fast, too far?
Oh, well, we're.
There's.
It's the first bullet point on the first, on the second page. First bullet point on the second page.
Are we skipping over?
Oh, no, no, wait. What page?
What page? Okay.
The second, the back of the first page?
Page two.
Yeah. Land stewardship and then the first bullet point.
No, this is, this is theirs.
Oh, they don't, they don't, I'm sorry. You know what?
Yeah, no, I might be skipping. I might be skipping. Yeah, I have notes that I'm, I'm working off of, but it's. Yeah, no, I might be skipping. I might be skipping. Yeah, I have notes that I'm, I'm working off of, but it's on your new long range where you're talking about eco positive, um.
Oh, convert lawn mowers and lawn equipment to battery operated. Oh, okay.
Are we skipping the first two bullet points?
No, we're not.
I think the issue is we're working on the different documents.
We are.
That's what Mimi gave to the board.
Yeah, we have, we have staff recommendations as in addition to your.
Oh, you have a more comprehensive document?
Yeah.
I have a four-page document.
This is, this is just staff recommendations based upon our feedback.
Can Mike get a copy then?
Everybody has it.
But he didn't, he done, he needs a printed copy.
Sorry, I'll find it.
He's fine. We need to all be together. This is going to take three hours.
No, it's not actually.
Well, if, if we're talking about different points.
I'm, I'm giving them the suggestions to go, this is there. It's fine. Mike's fine. He just didn't have any coffee today.
Jimmy's got the same issue. I, yeah, I have two guys. I mean, we have three documents. So.
Yeah. Can we just put it up on the screen, whatever the staff recommendations are, and then everyone can follow it?
Yeah. Okay. That'd be great. That's where I was going. Yeah.
I get you. It's just now, now, now that's why it's this.
I understand. There, there it is. You okay?
We're using this document.
Sorry, we're just getting ourselves together here.
I am now.
Oh, it's in the packet on the website. I don't know. You can bring that up for Janine. Sorry, I was on your page one. I was at the bottom. I was at Echo Positive Stewardship for Township Land.
There it is. There we go.
Oh my gosh, who can read that?
Scroll further. Okay. Convert lawn mowers. That's the one. Now that's the one we have.
Is that the one you? That's the one we all have, right?
Okay.
I thought we all did. We all good now?
Yeah.
We had a brief intermission. I apologize. Um, so as far as the, the township staff and park director develop a plan for maintaining our public lands in a manner that restores native flora fauna, deuces carbon footprint for land management, including establishing no more areas converting lawn mowers and, and lawn equipment to battery operated. Um, one of the recommendations that we have is that staff will evaluate the utility of electric vehicles and equipment when it's time for replacements. Um, and these evaluations will be discussed at budget time when replacements are due. This is strictly related to the, the conversion.
Right. No, that's, that, that's understandable. And we, you know, we get it. You're not going to throw away working equipment.
Okay.
It'd become a burden to the township to, uh, to convert everything en masse.
And, and so then the next part is, is around the maintenance of existing gardens and township properties. We realize it has been an issue. Um, and as it gets easier for volunteers to plant, it, it's always easier for volunteers to plant than to maintain them. So the conversation around maintenance is, is one that we wanted to engage in. Uh, but staff would continue to evaluate, um, those township properties as it relates to how they will maintain versus the planting.
Yeah. And it, it's an act, it's an issue of, um, informing the subcontractors. Because I do remember one EAC volunteer day where we just went and we cleaned up and unburied some trees in Penamblor Park. They've been mulched up to their knees. Uh, actually, that's the right term, I think. Uh, but they were mulched quite high and we spent the day digging them out. Um, so, so that, that's our one comment. And it's not only just the township, uh, you know, staff, but then the contractors that come in, think they're doing the right thing and they just, as an example, bury the trees and mulch.
So are we talking about the long range plan to address the net loss of trees and tree canopy?
Not yet, but, um, the next, the part about that was going to be that in 2024, we're going to co- complete a tree plant using an arborist to identify trees to be removed and planted on township properties. And the tree bank that we have that's funded by developmental fees will pay for that work. And then staff will seek input and feedback from the EAC when we begin those plantings.
Okay.
So that is to address the, the net loss.
Yeah. No, I think that's fabulous. I didn't, uh, I'm not sure I knew that was going on. Sandy, could you tell us more about that? Are you the person working with that? Mimi, are you?
John, you're muted. John, would you please, uh, Mimi, Mimi's asking if you could discuss the, uh, the tree plant thing, I think it was.
Oh yeah, sure. Sorry about that, everybody. I couldn't hear that. Um, so yeah, so Sandy and I have been reaching out to some, uh, other nearby townships to look at how they've been handling, uh, how they're, they're getting their, their tree money, uh, distributed equitably, I'll say, across the township to areas that really need it. Um, so we've been starting to sketch together a plan where we can have an arborist come in and kind of see what areas are doing well, uh, that we have in the township, kind of on our own lands. Uh, there was really an emphasis that we heard of, you know, building on areas that are working well. Uh, but then also being sure to take some time to look at areas that are, are struggling, uh, you know, whether it's they're full of, uh, diseased trees or dead trees and things like that. Um, and going through with the real plan to prioritize how you could take down bad trees that are either in diseased areas or becoming some kind of safety hazard, uh, and then very, I'll say strategically, using the money that's coming in from these developers to replant and fill in, in areas there where they're really going to thrive. Uh, there's also a portion of that that comes into the maintenance side or what came on earlier about the deer maintenance, um, in terms of protecting those trees, uh, so that they can grow properly. Does that all kind of sound about right?
Yeah. The heads are nodding. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, have you, I, I know, uh, I wasn't able to come to the meeting, the board meeting on Tuesday night, but, and I think the same group that has evaluated the property at Gwynedd Mercy also evaluated, was the same arborist that was used by Folkways. Have you talked to, um, anybody at Folkways to understand what they're doing on their property? Or the university property for that matter?
Uh, yes, I actually went and toured the property with Bill Durbin, uh, a few weeks ago. And, uh, he did tell me a bit about it. I didn't talk about the specific arborist, but he did show me how they've been, I believe they're using the term reforesting. So they've cleared out a lot of, um, dead trees and invasive species, uh, as they're going back to strategically replant. Uh, and getting back to the education side, that was a big emphasis from Bill in that case as well. A lot of residents, uh, in Folkways were not thrilled that a lot of those trees were being taken down, but for the health of the ecosystem, uh, he made a pretty strong case as to how that was really the right thing to do.
Yeah. Well, so what I'm kind of getting at is best practices. So, um, you guys have gone out and done some exploratory work and I think that's terrific. And I'm, I'm really glad that you're doing this, uh, cause we really, we've had some complaints about tree, dead trees along the trails and so forth. But, um, so I am wondering how we might work together with these adjacent properties, uh, but people that have large, uh, land holdings that are close to the township properties to coordinate, um, you know, the, uh, reforestation of these areas.
And, um, we just brought up on our side, uh, we weren't aware of some of these things as the EAC, uh, touring the properties and whatnot. Uh, we had a very good meeting when John did join us at an EAC meeting and we would, we would like to put on the agenda that he participated in our meetings more often and let us know what's up so that we feel a little more, a little less siloed. Uh, I think, we think it's great as well. And, uh, we want to be able to leverage that. In an education program, I mean, it just occurred to me, well, maybe an education program on why you take down trees. So that, you know, you don't get the complaints, um, and people understand it better. So the more things that we know that are happening, we then can do what we do best to, uh, to help support it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. But there really should be, this is a case which we just talked about a few minutes ago for the EAC reaching out to, uh, outside groups. I think this is a very important case where, um, it, the township, because our land is so, um, fragmented, the public lands, um, I think it would behoove us to work with the other large landholders who are also dealing with this ash bore issue across their property and trying to understand the best way to, to, um, take care of that problem, replant, get rid of identifying, get rid of invasives. And this is a, this is a long range, uh, objective because it's obviously too expensive to tackle even in five years. I think the Folkways plan is, is stretching out over, um, 20 years. So it, it would be a good idea, I think, um, for the benefit of the environment to coordinate with these other, um, landowners.
Sure. Yeah. It's, although I don't know if we would reach out or we would ask the township to reach out. That's more.
Well, I, I think we can talk about who does the reaching out, but it, it's something that we should not do in isolation.
No, we agree, but we know that it is not our purview to reach out to individuals or homeowners directly. Uh, that's a township.
It wouldn't be homeowners.
Well, homeowners associations, let's put it that way. It's not our job to, we've been told in the past, don't do that. That's a township. We don't, we, we cannot represent the township in those.
That's where Sandy comes in. So having those conversations.
Right.
Sandy and Sandy, between Sandy and John, they could facilitate conversations without.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I could even foresee putting together some type of, uh, uh, forum and inviting, uh, all these folks together to talk about, um, reforestation of the township and best practices and how to do that. So I could imagine the township inviting a representative from Beacon, from Folkways, from Gwynedd Mercy, uh, from some of the HOAs together and see, you know, that's a, the environment is, is, doesn't stop at a fence. And so, um, to protect, uh, the, what we have remaining environment and to make sure it's not completely overgrown by invasives like can happen easily and is happening in Trillan Creek. I think it's, it would be a good idea to coordinate across the township, um, also for the deer problem. The deer don't stop at the edge of, uh, the, the public property. So, um, I could imagine that might be a, uh, a worthwhile conversation to have.
Well, if you get those people together, several conversations to have, not just invasives or deer, water management, stormwater basins, we, we, with the water, we should get a clean water partnership, which Lower Gwynedd is a member. Uh, there's going to be a, actions that need to be taken to help stormwater runoff. And a lot of your retention basins in a number of the communities are old and not designed to best practices. So that forum, we agree, and we've talked about it internally to have, uh, with this EAC, to have a forum like that. Cause several of us remember, we live in HOA communities and like, wish I could convince them to do this. I, I couldn't get them to put a dog walk in my back area because nobody wanted trails. I used the ad word. So we recognize that in education, all the environmental aspects, uh, would be necessary because again, as you say, Lower Gwynedd doesn't have the majority of the public land. I mean, the public, land in Lower Gwynedd is not publicly owned as a majority. It's private.
Well, as, as part of our conversation tonight, I would be in favor of, I don't know, the other board members, uh, certainly speak up of, um, of asking this group, uh, to put together a forum, to reach across boundaries in Lower Gwynedd and see if we can discuss, uh, best practices, um, for the environment.
I think we can take that charge.
Yay.
Not saying it'll happen next week, but.
No, it doesn't have.
So if I can make a suggestion on timing, so since we were just talking about like trees were kind of the, the impetus for doing this. And it does make sense if you're going to put this together, maybe hit a couple of topics. Um, as John was describing, we're in the beginning part of that tree plant. So maybe let us spend this year figuring out, you know, learning what we're going to do, talking about what we're, how we're going to be doing this, what that's going to cost. Like get our legs under us a little bit so that at least we have some information to share, it, to get reaction feedback, not necessarily, I don't think anything we come up with this year is going to necessarily the end all be on. It doesn't change, but maybe looking at that for something for next year to do. So that we're just a little bit more informed before we do something like that.
I think that's appropriate. Um.
There, there was one question. I just, I don't want to forget. He had a question and I just want to make sure that we can get that question in.
Hi, I'm Larry Reddine. I live at 501 Montgomery. I know some of you and happy to see you again. I have many, uh, interests in the various things we're talking about here, but just, uh, my, my first thought with regard to trees. I have some trees on my property and I have a really good arborist who, um, works with, uh, Bartlett Tree Care. They have a research facility in the south where they develop trees and, you know, the problems of facing the trees. And I asked him if he would be available to be a, uh, a sort of a consultant for us. I didn't offer him any money because, um, I don't have any. But, um, a- anyway, uh, his name is Joe Bayer, B A Y E R. And, uh, he comes to my yard every, you know, a couple of times a year. There's different things to do with the, with trees, um, at those times. And so I see him fairly often and, uh, uh, he's, he's not looking for new business. I'll say that. Uh, he's, he's looking to do, do right by, uh, the natural environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I think the timing is good, um, Mimi, for that, because I think the Whis and Clean Water Partnership is also gearing up. And it's going to take them some time to get their act together as well. I know, uh, there's discussion between Whis Trails and Whis and Clean Water Partnership as to who's actually going to start doing stuff. So, but it's still, it's still in the gear up phase. So I think next year perhaps.
So maybe aspirationally, we could target, uh, January, February of next year.
Well, first I just want to make sure that everybody agrees that in 2024, that we're going to complete this tree plant. And so then once this tree plant, using an arborist to identify the trees, and I don't know, Mimi, have we solidified an arborist as of yet? So once we solidify an arborist, identify the trees to be removed, planted on township properties, use our tree bank funds, that were developed, uh, to pay for the work and then staff is going to come to the EAC. So be regularly engaged for input and feedback. And through that conversation and that process, we'll then talk about, you know, the end, the ending of that, and then the next steps as it relates to what we were talking about for, for the following year. So we'll have a good timeline because they're going to be in regular conversation. Does that make sense?
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay. So just to, just to confirm that so far you guys are in agreement with everything and this seems like awesome. We're on now to water stewardship. Okay. We're moving along. It's only been 50 minutes, but we're going to get there. So our township engineer, and so I'm not going to read necessarily your continuing or your not long range. I'm just going to offer the suggestions from the board and our staff and the conversations, if that makes sense, just for time sensitivity. Um, the township, our township engineer is developing a stormwater master plan to bring engineering solutions to the township's most pressing stormwater problems. So wanted to make everyone aware that we are engaging in this comprehensive stormwater management plan. And that this is going to be all encompassing as it relates to the entirety of the township. And so when that plan is completed, he'll be presenting it to the board and that will be shared with the public at large, including the EAC. So then we can start to make changes and actionable steps based upon that plan. So understanding the efforts to conserve the waterway runoff and promote clean and healthy waterways, the first step we think is to get this plan completed. Again, it gives us the opportunity to then determine what our next steps are to prioritize the goals and to, if need be, apply for grant funding, um, if applicable for any of the things that we need to accomplish. That makes sense?
It, it makes sense. And again, uh, allow us to perform our educational role that as that is developed, we will help do the out, some of the outward facing information to the community, especially if the community is being asked at some point, hey, we have to do this and it's going to cost X, Y, Z.
Yeah. Absolutely.
It's, it's our role, I think, to be a partner in that and provide that part of the equation.
So the next thing is the large scale projects that are going to be a part of the Whis and Clean Water Partnership. So that partnership is a local collaborative of 13 municipalities and four waste water treatment plants to create a watershed wide water quality improvement plan or the QIP for the Whisahickin Creek. Um, the stream bank restoration that is going to be done in conjunction with the Old Bethland Pike Bridge replacement is actually going to be funded by a grant from the Whisahickin Clean Water Partnership. We wanted to make sure that everybody was aware.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Um, because other arms of the township will be invested in capital projects. We think, um, it would be useful for the EAC's public outreach campaigns in 2024. it would be useful for the EAC's public outreach campaigns in two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty feet, twenty five, to not focus strictly on water stewardship yet. Wait till we complete that, that stormwater management plan. Wait till we complete the project that we're already working with, with the Whistaken Clean Water, with the, with Whistaken Clean Water Partnership. We don't want you to focus too much energies, knowing that we're already going to be engaging in these things that will inform the next steps.
Makes sense.
Does that make sense?
We appreciate your managing our.
I think those are completely aligned with what the EAC plan is. So that sounds good.
Okay.
And just while, so I, it's great that there's going to be restoration at the bridge by Old Bethlehem. Here's my question. Has there been any plan about what's going to happen as we do the Sumley Town Pike widening? And you know, they've clear cut along the, the Willow Run. You know, that would be a great place if we can do some restoration here that's really visible to people and we promote it.
You can visualize where Willow Run is.
It's the under.
Oh, the.
Right over here.
Yeah. Okay.
Between the traffic light at Bethlehem and the traffic light.
Is that, who's that is that?
I don't know whose that is. That's the thing.
Is that, it's not in the right way. I, I would think not.
It's the spot where they're, it's the little creek that runs under.
They had the, they had to rebuild the culvert before they could do the, the widening of the road. So what, what, Mark, what was your question?
Well, that's been pretty well clear cut.
Yes.
Along the banks of that.
Yes, it has.
If it's going, whatever plan there may be to fix that or re, replant that. If we're talking about doing this at Old Bethlehem Pike Bridge, which no one's going to see. It's great.
We're going to bring it up on Tracer. So this is our GIS mapping. It shows you who's the property owner.
You're a little bit off here at the train station. That's okay. That, I, that particular. Geez, that.
So we don't have our traffic engineer here tonight with us, but so we don't know. Mimi, maybe we can ask you to take that question.
But right there.
Is Penn Dot going to take care of the riparian areas along that creek? Or is that up to the township?
It's.
It says.
They won't do anything.
Go up, go up to the one that's, is that Spring House Village? Or it's their property, right? That, that'd be part of it.
Is that ours?
Hey, look at that. And then go on the other side of the road. Twillen Farms is their backyard.
We needed easements for the, for the project from cousins from the homeowners association there. And I, there's a portion here, like it's showing that we own right here and right here. And then it's Stoltz owns the, well, Penn, Florida comes up, but it's Stoltz that owns like the shopping center.
Yeah.
They did the.
I thought Stoltz owned the corner there and they traded us the Texaco station, right?
Right.
That's.
No.
That was going to be our corner.
No, they didn't trade us the Texaco station.
I thought they took that little sliver in front of our pageant.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that part, this part here.
That was going to be township park at one point.
Yeah, it was supposed to be a township park. That's what was part of the stipulation agreement.
Right.
But it wasn't, we bought Texaco, it was in a swap.
Okay.
Can you just, where is Texaco in here?
Texaco is right.
Right there. Okay, I just wanted to orient myself.
No, no, that's not Texaco. Up one, no, no, no. Keep, no, the other way, go the other way. Go up some.
You're going the wrong way.
There we go. Okay, here we go. Here we go. That's Texaco, that big open shop, that's Texaco.
Yeah.
That's ours.
And across the street, where is this?
Yeah, right across a little.
Yeah, they, if you remember, they, they put the culvert in phase one of the Sumley project was the culvert installation.
Again, my, my point is a little bit of that, that spot right there.
We own that.
We own that. And my thought, if that's a, now they may object, we put trees in there that covers up the Spring Hill Village sign, but.
Well, is that, then Penn Dot's not going to take care of it. And it would be up to the township to, to work on that. So that could be part of the water, stormwater stewardship plan, long range plan to see at some point if we could get a grant to pay. We have some money in that ARPA account. Oh. Oops. Okay.
I think we need to check this mapping though. I think this piece here is, is.
I, I, my recollection was the reason that Stoltz bought it is they didn't want us putting something in front of it that would block the view of the shopping center. So I thought they paid the township eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. And we paid for the Texaco station with the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was my.
That was my recollection as well.
Yeah.
That.
When I say it was a swap, that's what I meant by.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we owned that.
Yeah, I think.
Stoltz wanted it so that we didn't put anything there.
So what we can do is we can take back your recommendation for Willow Run. And we'll have staff look and see who actually owns the property. And then once we know who owns the property definitively, we can kind of come back and see if that is an applicable place for plantings or not.
And I, I think, Mike, I seem to recall your approach being the one, they really wanted that flattened out.
Yeah.
Well, and also they didn't want us to put something there like a cell phone tower that would be a problem for their tenants, Whole Foods or Arpa, you know, or anything. I, I remember that before I got on the board, but I remember it was a real issue.
I, I guess my point is it might be some way to manage that together to talk about proper riparian buffer stuff.
Yeah, no, it is. It comes up, it's, it's coming up wrong on here, but when I click it, when I click the link to the county, it comes up SHVH LLC, which is Stoltz.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I thought it's.
Okay. Anyway, sorry for that digression, but we were talking about riparian buffer repair.
Okay.
And I'm all about doing things that people see, that see what we're doing and then they understand a better connection to the environment.
So we're all good with those recommendations as it relates to stormwater and the water stewardship?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is resource conservation. So this has been a long, a, a long thread of conversation around the idea of single use plastics and banning. And, but there doesn't seem to be a consensus either amongst the EAC or other evaluators around bans in other communities if how to evaluate them, if they're effective at reducing single use plastics and evaluating evidence about different approaches. So I think we're looking to get a little bit more information from the EAC. So what is the goal? So is the goal litter reduction? And if that is the goal, is, is the ban an effective way to do that? Or is the goal reducing fossil fuels? Is there validity in the claims that the alternative use may actually produce more energy? And I know that you probably, like I have read the varying claims around, sometimes the same, reducing the single use plastics results in another plastic of thicker material that's supposed to be reusable, but then it turns out to not be reusable for as long term as maybe potentially anticipated, thus resulting in a harder to break down plastic that is now being thrown away. So we know that currently stored within lower going to collect plastic for recycling. We wanted to talk about what is recyclable there? Does this contribute to the goal? I think what we're looking for is some recommendations from the EAC. If this is something that you want to pursue, what is the actual goal? And then what would the recommendation be?
Do we actually know that these bags are being recycled?
Which ones?
The ones that are being put in the containers at the grocery stores.
I think the same way that we know that everything that we put in our recycling bin is being recycled or not. We're using our best guess.
It, it is not, I can tell you it is not.
No, and I don't think our recycle bowls and putting in our bin are being recycled either. But I mean, that's just the reality of the situation.
Oh, well, so the reality is the, if we can, as a community, agree to reduce our plastic use, whether that is through a bribe such as a, you know, a free bag given out from the EAC or whether it's from a ban or a, you know, ten cent cost to the consumer, then I, I think we should seriously consider that. Some of the things that have been published, I think have faulty data in them. And it is, I, I would not rely on somebody that's telling me that we have to use a cotton bag for five thousand uses before, you know, it lowers the inner carbon footprint. I think that's fallacious. If you understand that the plastics industry has a very big interest in countering, just like the tobacco companies tried to put out science to counter arguments against, you know, being fined for selling tobacco that kills people, more people every year than most other diseases. Then you will understand that some of the things that's, that are in print are not reliable. So I think it merits more study, but I, I don't agree that the problem is exacerbated by getting rid of single use plastics.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to in any way discount that. What I want to say is to the EAC, we're charged with what is your goal? But I think you have like four or five people behind you.
So if I may answer before everyone, no, I'm currently, I'm got the, you will, you will speak. But I was, I was just asked a question by the board. Our answer is it is an area of study. We don't have a consensus right.
Yeah, I know.
And so we are not in a position to make any recommendation. Plastic bags, single use plastic bags are cheap and profitable. Cheap to the consumer, profitable for the manufacturer. They are like that because they've been engineered for the last thirty years to be that way. Other containers have not been engineered for thirty years to be that way. So we're stuck at the moment. And we do not have among our, as far as I can tell, because we've discussed this internally, we don't have a consensus. We have an expert in plastics. We have an expert in recycling. So we are not in a position to, at this point, say one way or the other. I think our best approach, I think, is to observe. Let's see what happens.
I would all counter with just, this seems like an area that's ripe for homeowner education.
I, I agree. I think if we had.
And so I think that might be the first next step for two thousand and twenty four.
I, I would agree. I would like to see signs like, why are you double bagging? People double bag as.
The bags are so thin now because they don't want to give you, I'm just going to tell you my personal experience.
Yeah, they.
Bags are so thin now, I can't carry out a soda with one bag. I need three actually now. It would be, make, it would make more sense for them to give me a brown paper bag. Now I do have a hundred and fifty stronger bags in my trunk.
Total, yeah. And they don't, sometimes they don't come out. So.
Yeah.
It, and, and there are different issues between what happens at Whole Foods and Giant.
Yeah.
And if you notice, there's a big white plastic flag flying over the Giant parking lot for the last week because it got caught in the trees. So those are the bags that everyone looks at. You know, the, the amount of bags and, and stuff that comes from our restaurants is, is a different issue. That's, that's a different transactional situation. And again, I'll have to punt on this one. I mean.
Well, so this is, this is one that we wanted to charge the EAC with maybe having a conversation. But before you talk, we did have a couple of people like all stand up before anybody else wanted to talk that asked if they could. You just need one microphone. If somebody could pass a microphone to Mary.
I'm so sorry. This is, my name is Mary. I own our Pajero restaurant across the street. And over the last five or six years, I've done a lot of research regarding containers that, that are, you know, safe for people. I mean, ours do not have any of those chemicals. Even our pizza boxes don't have any of the chemicals. I, I think education's super important because in New Jersey, they did a bag, bag ban. And it resulted in they, they are talking about dropping it because after a year, it increased the use of, of plastic bags threefold. Because people were not reusing them. They were choosing to just throw them out. So, you know, I don't know how far you're going to go here with the single use plastics. I mean, you could go even deep into Saran Wrap if you want. There are manufacturers that are trying to develop a Saran Wrap that will, that will be able to be washed in your dishwasher. Personally, I think that's so disgusting. Like, it's ridiculous. And how far it goes beyond what the health department asks for. You know, I mean, a lot of the times we have these disposable containers, single use containers simply for health benefits. So that has to be put into consideration too. But education's really important. If people know that the bags are reusable, they might be more likely to actually use them. My other thing is educating people as to what they can do. If this is a concern for you, why don't you bring your own containers and your own bag when you come for dinner and pack up what's left of your meal? Instead of using our plastic bags. Ours are considered reusable simply because of the handle, which is kind of funny. But, you know, maybe, maybe people could help them in that way. You know, I mean, I think that's something that, that all of us would like them to do. You know, it would benefit everybody. So I don't know. I think it's, it's more important, barely yesterday, they just passed a law saying that they couldn't have those chemicals in, they couldn't manufacture any food containers with the PFA.
PFA.
Assets, right. Exactly. But it's going to take eighteen months for it to take effect because people already have stock. So I think that's a great move in the right direction, but they're still like that. Also, if you're going to go to after containers and even bags too, they leak. And, you know, containers all leak. I tried thirty different containers. They all leak and they're not good for hot foods. Some of the ones that are that clay stuff. I mean, literally, if you put a pasta in there with tomato sauce, it looks like it, it has dirt in it. The presentation is pathetic. It's horrible. So, I mean, they're, they're moving towards coming back with, coming with better containers. I've been looking for them. We have pretty good ones, actually. A lot of ours are compostable, recyclable, all that kind of stuff. But the, to have it totally that way would be extremely expensive as well. It's about ten times the price. So a container that's going to cost me twenty two cents is going to cost me two dollars. So that's another thing. They'll come down in price as they get better at them. But that's what I have to say about it. I don't know how deep you want to go into this whole disposable thing, but.
Thank you. There's, there's that whole row, I think, had something.
May I make a comment? My name's Judy Inskeep. I live at Folkways. And what Mary said about taking our own containers, that's exactly what my husband and I do when we go to a restaurant. We have plastic and glass containers. Well, we don't take the blast ones, they're too heavy. The plastic ones have snap on lids. They don't leak. They work fine. For shopping, we have fabric bags that we've been using for over thirty years and they're not wearing out. Plastic bags and styrofoam containers are a convenience. They're, they're very convenient. But do we want to go for convenience instead of the health of our planet? I don't think that's a good way to go.
Thank you. I think there's like two more people. I don't know. Or just maybe Melinda. Sorry. It's okay.
All right. Melinda Wolf, nine thirty Ridgeview Lane. I think we all agree that there's not consistent data. Does it work? Doesn't it work? And we also need to be aware that there's different types of bans. There's a ban with a fee. There's a ban without the fee. The problem, and again, when you look at the data or the research, you have to see what sort of ban they had, whether it was a hybrid or whether it was a strict ban, for example, in New Jersey. So you can't just, you know, you really have to dig down into the data, get the metadata, get, you know, just see exactly what went wrong or what's going right. I think we can also all agree that plastic, especially single use plastic is an environmental issue. Right? Okay. We know that plastic bags are also made from the same materials that real plastic is made from. So it involves fracking and involves all that sort of stuff. We know that it's dangerous for our health. We know that it takes, well, maybe you don't know exactly, but it takes a thousand years for a plastic bag, a thousand years for a plastic bag to degrade in a landfill, but it doesn't break down completely. Instead, it photo degrades, becoming microplastics, which Maureen is an, an expert at. It's of course dangerous to wildlife. We see all these pictures of pelicans ingesting these bags. In two thousand and fifteen, about seven hundred and thirty thousand tons of plastic bags were generated in the United States. Most of it ending up in landfills and the ocean. And it's a significant source of litter, which we, which we all know. And by the way.
And by the way, the Americans use about an average between, you can see, data goes between 370 and 470 plastic bags per person, whereas people in Denmark use an average of four plastic bags per year. So I was thinking, I really think it is something that the EAC should consider maybe forming a subcommittee with interested residents and, and, you know, business owners or restaurant owners, meeting and talking about this and coming up with, with a, a plan to present to the, the board along these lines. Either you're going to scrap it completely or, you know, maybe there is something to have it apply to grocery stores and have it apply to, you know, kind of roll it into place and not, not just across the board. In thinking about tonight, I also wanted to make you all aware that 10 of our neighbors have instituted a plastic bag ban and fee, including Ambler, Sheltonham, Lower Marion, Montgomery Township, Narbith, Springfield Township, Upper Marion, Upper Morland, West Norton, and White Marsh. By the way, the King of Prussia Mall resides in one of these townships. And the, so that they're having to comply with it also. Considerations are going on right now in Abington and Plymouth Township. So that will be 12 of our neighbors that have instituted, not necessarily implemented it yet, but, you know, it's a planning thing. You, you come up with the ordinance and it might take another year for it to roll out to get the community on board. I also wanted to show you some data about our population, which I thought was interesting based on the percentage, the age demographics by percentage of Lower Gwinnett versus the United States. So instead of me standing up and rallying it, the, the thing that I thought was really interesting was 65 and over age group, that comprises 25% of the Lower Gwinnett population, township population, whereas across the United States, it's about 16%. We have Folkways. We have, you know, a number of, of retirement villages. So the, these older people, myself included, are in this category. And I am on at least three volunteer committees that are environmentally oriented. And just about everybody is in this age group. And you ask them, why are you doing this? Why are you doing this? For my grandchildren, for my kids and my grandchildren. They don't want to leave this earth, the mess that it's currently in. So I would guess that your, your residents are for this.
Thank you, Melinda. I, I've, I've watched a lot of the traffic back and forth with the EAC, the emails. And I don't pretend in any way to be an expert on those issues. And I like to think I'm a somewhat, you know, reasoned person. I'll listen to whatever is presented. But the fact that these other municipalities have done something doesn't mean we should do it just as a reaction. We should do it if it's the right thing to do. And, and I don't disagree with that, obviously. But we, that's why we need the EAC to recommend what to do. And, and, and there's, there's passion on, honestly, I was surprised that it wasn't, I, I'm surprised that it's not the consensus, let's have a plastic bag ban. But I understand, there's a whole nother side to the story. And until we get some recommendation from the EAC, it's hard for us to act. I'm not saying we're going to like rubber stamp whatever you say, but like if you all can't even sort of come up with a recommendation, how are we supposed to? No, I, I, I appreciate that.
And I, I think logistically, I think in my mind, what are we actually talking about? Because Whole Foods already, you can only get paper bags.
That's not true.
You can only get paper bags at Whole-
Paper bags, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. I thought you said, I thought you said-
We're talking about single-use plastic bags. So in, in some of the restaurants, the majority of the restaurants are giving you bags that are more than single-use. So are we talking about CVS and we're talking about Giant? And like, so i- is it having a conversation with Giant and saying, hey, would you want to transition to brown paper bags?
We, we had a conversation with, excuse?
Oh, Wawa, yes.
We actually had a conversation with Giants. I reached out to my connections in the plastics industry and we got their head of sustainability on the phone. And Lisa and I were, were on it. And they went through their sustainability programs there. I mean, they have a bagged benches program. Now, I, I have not gone and traced to make sure that they're actually making the benches from those. It's a huge market, but it's actually considered an upgrade because you're taking a single-use plastic and you're making a more durable bench out of it. So there's a lot of-
Do the bags have to be returned for that to happen?
Yes.
And how often does that really happen?
I, I do.
Okay, okay, great. Look, look, you all are, you all, of course you all do it. Of course you do. You're here because you care. But honestly, be honest with ourselves. What percentage of Lower Gwinnett does that?
I know.
Single-digit percentage?
I mean, but have we, have we, have we advertised that? Have they advertised that?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, the answer is right. We, we have, that, maybe that's part of the education component.
But this is, this is what I was trying to get at. Right. I think we're, we're, we're thinking like we're not a, like we can't transport within our community. I don't go grocery shopping at the Giant in Spring House, just to be fair. I go to Wegmans and they don't give you bags at all. You have to pay for the paper bags or bring your own, which is why I have 150. Yes, which is why I have 150 in my bag, in my, I'm not exaggerating, because I forget. You know, or you go to Aldi. There's no bags at Aldi. Costco, there's no bags. And if you go anywhere in Philadelphia, because they have certain things that you need, there's no bags. So it's only if you're going to that Giant and Spring House, because if you go to any, almost any other community-
Or Wawa or CVS.
But I mean, I don't get enough-
Or the drugstore or the small restaurants, you know, I, I think-
Well, there's not, there's not that many small restaurants that don't give you a bag with a handle.
You know, we, we can sit here and argue that, that, you know, there's not that much plastic bag use in Lower Gwinnett, but I, I don't think that's the point.
No, I wasn't actually trying to make that point. What I was trying to say is there are steps that we can take. And I think the first step is, is education to our public. I think the first, the next step might be, what does, what does the next step look like? And what can we agree upon? We're looking to the EAC to give us a recommendation. And if that is outreach to our community partners, outreach to the businesses, if it is, you know, trying to form a next step to, to get to where we, where you're not going to be able to get a plastic bag that is a single-use bag in Lower Gwinnett. We could probably potentially do that without a ban, but if we can't, then what does it look like? Is it a fee? Is it a hybrid? Is it a, which one works? And that's where the, some of the data that Melinda was talking about comes in and weighing the cost-benefit analysis of which one would produce the results that we're looking for in our community.
Yeah, that's, that's a very important charge to this committee, and we take it very seriously. And education is one of our big points. And the fact that we haven't reached consensus internally obviously means, you know, there's a lot of points here. And I, I, I want to applaud the work you are doing to research the different bags and different opportunities. And, and that's, that's very important. And I really thank you for doing that. And bringing that information to us is critical because otherwise we're in a vacuum. We don't know. And you've done the work, so again, and Melinda, I thank you as well to, to put all that stuff in context. So there is a lot of information out there. We can accept a charge now to explore education.
Yep.
And I think that's, and we, we have, and we can continue to do that. Maybe we refocus it and that-
Can we also ask maybe that we pivot with some of our non-members but residents of the community who are passionate about this issue that might want to lend some of their expertise, including businesses that have already done some of the work?
Absolutely. I mean, we have to look at this as a community. And the community involves all of us, the businesses, the retirees, everybody. And what is best as a collective and what is the best approach? And again, the answer has not appeared magically. If it were, we'd, we'd be the first ones to say, hey, 5 cents and it's this paper, this fiber content and whatever. We don't know that yet. I don't have any doubt. I mean, I sat on as the liaison for a year. I know you guys work hard. So I don't, I know it's not for a lack of trying, but it's, honestly, you, and I take Tessie's point, you got to, you gotta, you gotta know where the source is coming from. But it's, a lot of times, it's the same thing with the electric cars. Good for the environment. What do you do with the batteries? I mean, there's, there seems to be always a downside. And I'm, I'm thankful that you all are looking at it so carefully so that we don't just jump into something because it's the thing to do today and tomorrow it may not be the thing to do. Maureen, you want to comment?
I think Melinda had one thing.
The reason I pointed out that there are these 10 local communities is that there's a host of information and templates and ordinances that are available online. There's a particular group that's called, of, of all these municipalities that meet and they share their resources and they share their, their, there's a book, a guidebook that's 58 pages long that has all this information, all the data, all the, that's how I got this data. You know, there was a calculator machine, not a machine, but a link to a calculator and I could see exactly what's going on in Lower Gwinnett. So the, the reason I say that the, these are local, they, they've gone through it, they've got the research and it's all out there. It's compiled. There's a, there's a group that's meeting and they, they have a repository of all this information. That was the point of knowing that there's other people.
Thank you.
Um, I, I just wanted to point out that I know this is not going to be very popular, but sometimes plastics are the right answer for environment. I mean, just because you have the word plastic in it doesn't mean that the material is wrong. In order to determine whether or not you're really going to get an environmental benefit from a material, you have to do a life cycle analysis. And that includes everything all the way back to the plant where the material is made and how much energy it uses, all the way through until the end of life and how many times it got used. These are not simple calculations. These are not simple decisions. This isn't something that we can just, you know, pop up and educate the public as far as, you know, how these things are done. They're very, very complex. So there are facts out there. You need to know where the facts are coming from. And you also need to know, you know, whether or not, a lot of times, which side people are coming on, because this is a little bit of divisive type of issue, depends on, you know, which sources they're using for their information. So basically, what I've been doing is I've been leaning heavily on the EPA and, and government agencies through, throughout all this because there are a plethora of other agencies on all sides of these matters. So just a word of caution, why we're having an awful lot of discussion and why it's not as simple to just go out there and educate somebody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One thing.
I had the opportunity last year to go to Morocco for three weeks. And, you know, I've traveled a lot, actually, to Europe, all over. But this trip to Morocco was really interesting because they've banned plastics and they had what I thought was an amazing solution. It's these bags that look like this. They're clothed, but they have a little bit of, that it's compostable plastic. They break down in 30 days. They have them in every color known to man. And they're a lot nicer than t-shirt bags, frankly. I mean, I like this thing. I had 30 pounds of fossils in one of these things and it didn't break, which I think is a much better alternative to paper bags. And they're compostable, they're eco-friendly, they're decent looking, and they're strong. And I said to my bag guy, are, are, is anybody using these in the United States? I described it to him. He said, no, I haven't seen them. They're using them a little bit in New York, but in the United States, they're hardly ever used. And I just ordered bags for us, for people to take their food home, in case you don't bring your own, like this, with our logo on it. And they're, if you want to look at them, they're, they're really nice.
I think that's great.
Are they cost-effective? Are they cost-
They're very cost-effective. The heavy one is 30 cents, the light one is 80. So that's not bad. My bags are reusable. Wow.
Again, we, we thank you for doing the research. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So everything's, everything usually is incredible. Wow. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Oh, non-mobils. And, and basically, I was, in one of my former lives, the head of non-mobils for Dow North America. So, so basically, there's entire companies within the United States that supply these types of materials throughout. So that it wouldn't be that hard for me to reach out to, to people to find out, you know, where they can source them.
Well, they, to be honest, they are being used. I mean, I mean, that maybe not in your right.
Hang on to that one. Okay, we, I think if I can draw this together-
We have a good idea of what the next steps would be as it relates to-
Sufficiently not vague that we can move forward. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
How's that? That's as, that's as far as I'll go right now. We will, we will take the charge to, taking an educational charge to continue to examine and then work with the community, the general community, all the different represents, representatives behind us, to explore this issue a little bit further and maybe come up with a recommendation at some point. Give us some time.
Thank you, Mary, for bringing that in and for sharing.
We have a comment on mine, too.
Somebody-
Yeah.
You can go ahead, Ms. Farah.
Rita, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Are you?
Turn mic, yeah.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I don't, I didn't hear this raised up very much in this discussion, but there is evidence that plastic is harmful to human health and that it's being found in the blood of most people and in our water and in our air. And there, there is, there is pressure to avoid plastic for our, the health of all living creatures, including us.
Agreed.
And it affects the endocrine system. And I wonder what it's doing to our society. I just, you know, right.
There, there's no question that, that plastics have had, as Maureen said, both a positive and a negative.
Positive and negative effect. No, no question. I mean, even-
Not a positive health effect.
Well-
I can't imagine that.
We, we can't, you, you can't make blanks. There are many different types of plastics in the medical industry.
The medical industry, you know, a lot of-
You would not survive the hospital without plastic.
Oh, well, that's a different, it's not a single-use plastic bag. Right.
Oh, many of them are single-use.
Yeah, much, much of the medical industry has single-use.
The point is that plastic doesn't, doesn't ever disappear. It just gets smaller and smaller and smaller. And that's as opposed to- It depends on what, I, I, I don't want to go there. Yeah. I mean, it depends on what plastic it is, what its composition is, how it's going to, you know? So.
Yeah. All right. No, I think this, yeah, go ahead, sure.
My name's Susan Fitzwater. I live at 207 Bridle Lane. I have been following life cycle analysis probably for about 25 years. And I totally agree with Maureen. It is hard to do. So I would urge you folks, don't wait until you have a totally reliable, totally agreed-upon model for, or what everybody agrees is, you know, like a gold standard life cycle analysis. Right now, I'm sure that we can all agree on some plastics uses that are good and some plastic uses that are not good. For instance, if you go and you buy a reusable plastic bag at Trader Joe's and you're not real careful about how you put your groceries in and after four uses, it's totally gross, you don't want to throw it away. That's bad for the environment. If you have single-use plastic bags, you- If you have single-use plastic bags, you don't want them out draping around where they're going to break into smaller and smaller pieces. Those are things we can all agree on. So why don't we concentrate on what we can agree on? Before wanting to come up with some, with a comprehensive use of plastics or non-use of plastics or whatever God. That's it.
Thank you.
We, we can appreciate, can appreciate the idea that you don't, you can wait forever for an absolute answer and you know, one definition of leadership is taking action in the face of uncertainty.
Absolutely. So I just, with that, I think we guys, you have a charge. We're going to transition on to the township's goal to transition to 100% clean energy. Just a little background, PICO conducted an interview audit of all the LGP facilities in March of 2021 and found that there was not many remaining areas for significant improvement. The completed energy efficiency improvements to the township facilities are, and I just want to list them for you so you're aware of them. We replaced all lighting in the interior of certain buildings, all parking lot lighting and all street light with LED. We replaced heat pumps, hot water heaters, HVAC systems, doors and windows of the township building with high efficiency products. And we replaced the doors to the public work section of the township building with garage doors that have a more robust insulation. As it relates to the 2023 usage of ChargePoint EV charging stations on township properties, we have four plugs that are available, two at the municipal building, two at Veterans Park. We have 257 charging sessions in 2023. 190 were at the municipal building and 67 were at Veterans Park. The combined average for those sites is about a 0.7 sessions per day. The average charging session lasted about two hours and 10 minutes. And there were only five days in 2023 where the charges were used for more than four sessions. The most active day was June 9th, 2023, when the session saw a combined of seven sessions. The estimated savings is 2,381 kilograms of Kent greenhouse gas emissions and 416 gallons of gasoline. So we wanted just to make you aware of where we stood as the township in our transition and to, and the reduction of our carbon footprint and our, and our, our goal to 100% clean energy. The next thing that I wanted to talk about just briefly was our communication and outreach. There are some new things that we are doing regarding our communication and outreach that wanted to make you aware of. We just rolled out an Instagram page and we're producing more engaging content for social media and for news. And so we're asking the EAC if you have anything additional to add. That effort would be welcomed to include any of that information to staff so that they can share it on our Instagram page. Staff, can you wait for it? I did.
So there's nothing with the long range?
No, I'm, I'm sharing where we stand. I didn't have anything. It was not that we're not accepting those recommendations that you guys have outlined. I'm just making you aware of where we are.
You skipped down to communication outreach, which is a separate topic without discussing what the EAC has proposed for energy transition.
So there's no, I didn't have any concerns. I didn't think that there was any concerns. Are there any concerns as it relates to the recommendations as far as the long-range goals of the EAC for transition to 100% green energy?
So you're nodding your head on that one.
Yeah, we're saying yes.
Okay.
That's what we're saying. We're saying that those, those are acceptable and I'm just letting you know where we are.
Cool.
As far as the task force for energy transition? That's one of the, that's one of the goals?
That's one of our goals. Yeah.
Is there, do you want to have a different conversation?
No. It's just that in the ordinance or the, when you signed the pledge, it said there that it would be, that the board would assign or create a committee, a task force and were consulted in the RF 100.
What we're looking for, I think, from the EAC is the task force for energy transition is for you to identify who you would need to, or what, what is needed and what needs to take place as far as the next steps. So until that's kind of brought to the board from the, from the EAC, I think that we're not ready to move on to hire a consultant or to work with a consultant or what it would look like for us to collaborate with other organizations or other EACs to take that next step.
It wasn't clear to me either, Linda and Danielle, so.
So it says that you're going to create a nimble task force of highly interested individuals to facilitate the energy transition. That's understood. As part of the ordinance, the next steps would come after the task force is identified and created, correct?
Right, but this, this long-range proposal, this aspect wasn't necessarily that we weren't proposing that the EAC would establish a task force, but, but that it would be a township initiative. So, but if you're saying that you want us to sort of list sorts of types of expertise we might want on that side, kind of a, a transition team.
So I don't want to get down to the very nitty-gritty of like the project management of the creation of a task force. But we have staff and we have supervisor liaisons. So we would have a conversation of what that task force would look like, how we would like to build it out, how we would like to advertise and engage with the community to get individuals that are interested to be on the task force, what the next steps would be as it relates to once the task force has been established, the goals of the task force and the need for a consultant to be able to engage with that task force. So you have to start with the creation of this.
I understand that, but I guess I, I'm asking like, whose responsibility is it to initiate that beginning of that project planning?
Well, so we signed, we signed the, the, we signed a ready for 100 agreement. We are all on board as a board that we understand the parts and the aspects and the tasks and the, the action items, we'll say, within what needs to happen next. So then the EAC is tasked to some degree as the advisory committee with making those recommendations. So it's working with staff, it's working with the supervisor liaisons to say the next step would be that we would like to engage with our community as a whole and put this out there as a feeler for all interested parties to be able to bring their expertise to this task force. How are we going to do that? Are we going to do it through a Google survey? Are we going to do it through an ask or a call for volunteers? Or we're going to do it through identified individuals that we would like to be on? And then staff with the supervisor liaisons would work with the EAC to actually execute on that next step. Does that make sense? And I, fair, to be fair, I am the supervisor liaison. We're only one month in. So I'm not sure how much you guys have gotten done as it relates, but I see the creation is theirs or I thought that there was at least some conversation. Am I, am I wrong in assuming that?
You're, you're wrong.
The conversation has not even taken place at all?
No. The EAC was under the impression for the past year that this task force would be created and that the board, you, were going to be creating it and that they were just waiting for something to happen. So that's why we put it into this plan or they put it into this plan rather. So it would be crystal clear that this was going to be initiating.
Got you.
So I, you know, unless I was this.
Is this something that you are not comfortable or is this too much of an ask of these? Because if it is, then that would be something that, this would be the time to communicate that.
I guess one of the reasons we were supposedly holding off was the conception of the comprehensive, oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we were holding off, it was due to the comprehensive plan to be, you know, becoming initiated. Is there a connection?
It has been initiated. It's not completed yet.
Right, and it's going to be.
About 18 months.
Yeah.
In totality.
So, so I, I, I was under the impression that we were holding off because some of the work on the comprehensive plan needed to be done prior to us initiating. Is that not true? Or is that no longer true?
I don't know if that was the, who gave you that direction. Again, I wasn't the supervisor liaison to the EAC. So it's all communications. I was not aware.
I would not have told you that.
Okay.
Maybe I, maybe I misunderstood.
But you know, you, you do bring up a good point, Maureen. I think that the comprehensive plan and the RF 100 commitment are not mutually disagreeable. I mean, those, those pieces should fit together in the case that we want to develop a new charging station or something like that. Or particularly the development of a walkable community and pathways and bikeways and so forth. That certainly is part that could fit into the comprehensive plan. So I, I wasn't aware that that was the thought, that there had to be sequencing.
I thought it was part of it because they both came out around the same time and nothing was started on either one of them in the beginning and now we've gone quite, I mean, we've done a lot of work on the comprehensive plans, so, so maybe now is a good time, but okay. I mean, if I'm wrong, sorry.
And I think maybe we can coordinate since Rich is also on the comprehensive plan. He's a liaison. We can kind of work in tandem while they're developing the energy section because comprehensive plans typically, typically have a section dedicated to energy.
Needs to be part of it. Yeah.
So if we can kind of coordinate with the EAC and the committee, that would be great.
So to summarize, if the minutes can reflect what Danielle said we wanted to do since she laid it out step by step about five minutes ago. Sure. We'll, we'll, we'll follow that step.
It could just be basic project management, but I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I got you. I got you. We'll, we will accept that charge. Not sure what the timeline will be depending on all the other things we're working on, but we'll put it on our to-do list.
But also as you, you staff, use your supervisor liaisons for questions, for concerns, for next steps, for how you want to proceed.
We are, we are learning the, working with our staff liaison. I mean, Sandy's terrific, but we start, start, start working with John as an example to do that.
So that Sandy, this might be something that John, isn't he, isn't he our project program manager? He could have a new assignment. I know. But so Danielle, to your point, I think it wasn't clear on the EAC that they were supposed to do anything with regards to RF 100 because they had been told to wait. And so that is why this is explicitly spelled out. So now it sounds like we're all together in agreement on moving forward with this, which I think is terrific because we're running out of time or implementing this. But you know, honestly, this is, as we know, not a trivial task at all. So it's, it's a big assignment, I think.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now communications.
You guys good now?
We're good now.
Everyone take a deep breath? Okay, here we go. Communications. So I think I was talking about briefly that we started a new Instagram page. We're looking for the EAC to, along with any other of our committees, to kind of share information to help engage content for social media and for news. They're developing a social media guide for eventual approval, but to the, this is staff, for eventual approval to the board of supervisors to give staff and volunteers clear direction about the content and source for posts. So look for that guide in the near future, but in the interim, please sharing information as, as it relates to engagement with staff. We are also, staff is also building an event and social media calendar for 2024 to coordinate communications. And we want to thank the EAC for regularly providing content for the printed newsletter, the e-news and for social media.
And we thank Brenda for putting together such wonderful materials for us. So credit where credit is due.
So what we were hoping that we could build upon are the public education campaign for homeowners and businesses in Lower Guaney. We're, we're liking for you to focus on practical steps that can be taken inside and outside of one's home, business and provide examples and demonstration projects when applicable. Asking to promote composting in Lower Guaney to the residents and businesses with outreach campaigns and workshops.
And we did have a composting workshop and we will continue to do that. It's still a high priority for us.
Additionally, to provide residents with the opportunities to properly recycle their batteries, techno trash, electronics and holiday lights. Just to continue on. Yes. And to recognize environmentally friendly practices with the going green awards, which you thought were a huge success.
Yes. We, we think that was a really great program. And again, thank Maureen for heading up that subcommittee and doing such a great job with it. If I may read that into the record.
You have a question?
Oh, is there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another question behind? Okay.
Is there another question?
When I get emails about like Sunday Town Pike construction or this, that has the township logo on the top, that, that comes from, yeah, okay. And we were talking, none of us knew about the March 6th thing. So I, and I know you said something about posters are coming out. Does that mean hard posters? They're going up in facilities, Mark, for where the, where the posters go?
So the ones that you're seeing up here are actually in all of Arquias. And that is actually in the e-newsletter as well.
That was in the, you know, I, I think I know what one of the problems is. Some, it might be just Gmail. I'm reading, I'm reading, I'm reading. And I only just found out there's like three dots at the bottom of it that you have to click on to see the entire newsletter. Anybody else get fooled by that? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that does happen. It puts like a truncated view in your inbox for Gmail and you have to actually like click on it to see it. We're actually working on making the newsletter shorter so that that doesn't happen and you can see the whole thing in your inbox.
That's what happened. It's, it's like wasn't in the top.
It was in there. I can show you, but.
Well, okay, then I, but.
And it'll be tomorrow, the March 1st will go out, so it'll be in there again.
Okay. But could something go out individually? Like, you know, when they announce something about?
Email blast about it. But yeah, there it is right there.
Yeah. So I think when the Instagram page starts, maybe, you know, little packets of information, a, a single picture or something like that can go out to reinforce what's in the newsletter. I, I.
Well, I was so.
Yay.
Using Instagram or Facebook, you know, I just, I have to be a kid. You know, put it in my mailbox and all of you.
I, I think that this is a, is a little bit of an ongoing problem with a lot of the publicity for, you know, I think for the EAC stuff, I don't know, but other township groups that try to organize residents or bring residents in is, you know, how to get the information out there because, and have it read and responded to. So I also, you know, with the, the e-news, I never saw this flyer, which is beautiful, which, but I just saw a notice. And we've been working, Brenda and I, on a flyer ourselves, which now seems like a little bit double, double effort. But this is the first I've seen that notice. But you know, it's not necessarily going to all the people who could most benefit from having a free PICO assessment, for example, or a half-priced PICO assessment. I don't, you know, I'm not sure the best way to get the information out to lower-income people or whomever. It's, it's a little bit of a quandary. I mean, I would like to, I mean, I'm going to post them in my neighborhood and stuff like that. And I said something to Sandy about maybe forwarding them to some of the local churches or homeowner management companies who might disseminate them, you know, to residents, but we only have a few days left now for this particular thing. But if we have if we have a protocol or a strategy for, for the people who don't use Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on Instagram, maybe because I'm old, I don't know. But I'm sure that I'm not, you know, we're not, Melinda and I are not the only one. So it's a problem.
So that's part of why we're kind of talking about a social media guide for eventual proposals to kind of give to the board of supervisors so we can share with our committees. It talks about how we can try and share information, not just through social media, but also through news and most effectively communicated to township residents as a whole. I did see it in February. I did actually have one of the churches reach out to me about information related to it. I think other people did see it. I think that if you're not using Instagram, you're not using Facebook and you don't get our e-news, then maybe you didn't. I think that if you're not using Instagram, you're not using Facebook and you don't get our e-news, then maybe you didn't, unfortunately.
So, you know, there's not a real good newspaper anymore, local newspaper. Well, yeah, I don't know about either of those, but it, it's very difficult to reach people. And if there are suggestions that anybody in the community can make, please bring them and, and share them. Because I think one of the most difficult aspects of trying to run a government is communication with the residents. And I, I think since, at least since Danielle and I got on the board. The communication, I think, has really improved, but we, that doesn't mean we have a lot, don't have a lot more work to do. I think we'll probably at some point start up our community outreach meetings. And so, you know, if we have seminars or educational events coming up, we can advertise those also. But it is very difficult to, to find one means to reach everybody in the township.
Well, it only go, it can only go to the residents whose email we have, right? I mean, so. Honestly, short of literally mailing stuff out to people, which I can't imagine you all want. That's the, we can only send things to people if we have the ability to, if we know their email address.
So, that's a good suggestion, but you know, it's not like every day you send something, but this, this is a good thing, this March 6th thing. Whatever you have in April, just find out an email.
So we did, and we did, that's what we're saying, this went out. This was in February and it's coming out again in March tomorrow. So it went out in February, it's coming out again for March and it's coming out again tomorrow. So again, if you sign up for our e-news and you can, you can go onto the.
Maybe there's an issue with some certain softwares that it's not getting displayed appropriately?
It is.
There, there wouldn't be, no, well, the, the problem, the problem is.
We would send, we would have to send out 15, so what, what, Jamie's showing you is all of the e-newsletters are stored here in this area on the webpage. You can click on them and see them, but. At every one of those pictures, we would have to send out separately, so it would be like 15 emails. So we're trying to tell you all of the things that are coming in February and potentially coming up in March for you to plan on. It's the most efficient way that we've thus far come up with, but go ahead, Sandy.
I have one other thing to add. At Veterans Park, even though we still have a manual board. That was changed to show this event and Jamie's going to be putting it up on the digital marquee out front too. Because we had this meeting tonight advertised. There's only so much advertising that we can do on our boards. It's easier to do the digital sign because the staff can do it from the comfort of their desk. The manual sign does mean manual work and it is time consuming. It's also getting all that information all onto a board that has limited space. And knowing how you're going to position, so, you know, the information has been pushed out. Yeah, well, I'll take it all.
But if you ever, but if you ever can't open up the email, you can, you can go online to e-newsletters and open up any month at a time. On the main page, can you go back, can you go back up? If you go back up onto the main page, it's under e-newsletters. It's all, they're all there. Now we want to open it up to public comment for any issue that was not addressed on the agenda. Does anyone have that public comment? Seriously, Melinda? Seriously? You can go ahead, go ahead.
I know at one time I thought the EAC was working on. What do you want to call them? Best practices for builders, kind of like guidelines? That would, okay, he knows what I'm talking about.
That's a good point. Through our liaison with Planning Commission and the. Which one, zoning building? Right, between the two, we've, we have managed to, we, those discussions happen. At the planning stage, things like trees and best practices and LEDs. EAC cannot enforce those things. It's not our place, but we have, working with our liaisons. Made sure that they're aware of those questions to be asked at the time of application. So your point's well taken and we have, sorry, we didn't mention, but that is one of the things under our liaison work that we do. And it's, it's kind of starting to happen, so it's on the, you know. Is that about right, Maureen?
Yeah, basically, if we have something coming before the planning commission, we allow the EAC. We notify them that it's coming up and if they have certain things and questions. At least when I go to the meeting for the planning commission, I can represent their interests.
I have one last question from, for our liaisons to the planning committee. Has anyone started discussing the side effects of light pollution? Has that come to the fore at all?
Not, not in the planning commission.
Oh, go ahead.
Anytime a lighting plan is proposed, we have a ordinance that defines what kind of lights can be used. How many lumens are allowed to be generated in a specific area, so. Typically, everybody that comes before us has the low density, kind of like LED lighting for parking lots. So they're not affecting residents or birds or anything else. And if they don't, we remind them that that's what we want.
Great, thanks, Rich.
Any additional comments? On behalf of the board, I want to thank the EAC for all the hard work that you have done in 2023. And we want to thank you for all the planning, we can tell how much time, effort and thoughtfulness went into this plan. Not only for, for 2024, but for the future. We appreciate all of your hard work and your engagement with not just us, as a board with the community. And ensuring that everyone has our environment and our focus on our planet, reducing our carbon footprint. And engaging about environmental stewardship in, in the township within the forefront of their thoughts. I want to open it up to the supervisors to make any additional comments. I'm going to start with Tessie.
Well, my, my main comment is, as Danielle was saying, thank you for all the work and dedication. I know after having been a liaison now for a couple of years, it's been my honor to work with each of you. You're very dedicated and thoughtful and hardworking and thank you for all your input to the township.
Janine?
Yep, I just echo what you both said. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. And I know it's hard to get help and you might, you know, feel like you're alone in these projects sometimes. And so we're really grateful for all of your time and your energy and your efforts. And hopefully in the future, we'll be able to get, you know, more awareness and more people to help. So thanks again. Thanks for sticking with us.
Jimmy?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, just being new, I'm still trying to get a hang of everything, but I've been listening to everything, you guys. I think this is very, very important, what you guys are doing. And I just thank you for, I know it's a lot of work, but just want to thank you and definitely keep letting us know what. You guys think needs to be done and what we should do, so thank you.
I echo everybody's comments. I was liaison last year. I see what you guys do and, and thank you so much.
Just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank our, our township staff. Thank you to Sandy, John, Pharrell, you know, Mimi and the rest of the staff. For all of the hard work that they go into making all of your projects, your presentations, your workshops, the educational programs happen, be executed, be flawless. And, and just to plan for the future is a huge undertaking in and of itself. We appreciate our former EAC members coming out tonight, as well as business members. And, and we're still very thankful that you're, you're choosing to volunteer like we all are. Who are going to township for the betterment of our community. With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.